Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Bettis, you take the roll, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch. Councilmember McKart. Councilmember Squires. Councilmember Kerwin. Councilmember McCarty. Councilmember Cecersky. Here.
Councilmember Lynch and Councilmember Squires are over at the legion for a recognition, and they'll be a little bit late, hopefully not too late. Okay, moving on, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented with one change in the B section, number three, providing for pause. The applicant has called and asked to pull this. There's some more paperwork they need to submit to us, so if we could get approval of the agenda minus number three in the B section.
So moved, Mayor.
Moved by Councilmember Kerwin.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Cecersky. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmembers King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Community events, we'll start off with Theresa Manuel from the Friends of the Library.
My name is Theresa Manuel, and I've been currently volunteering at the library with our Friends group, which is a group of volunteers that have been hosting our book sales twice a year. The first one I did was in September of 2012. In each book sale, I am proud to say that we've been increasing our sales. The donations are coming in from the public, and we're very thankful for that. We currently have 125 Friend members, 40 of those that helped us put on our last book sale this last week, which also included a book sale over at Schoolcraft. I want to say thank you to our Key Club members for coming out to help us, the Key Club students set up, a couple Boy Scouts came out, and all our Friend volunteers who helped set up. And I also want to thank Bonnie Heckard from Schoolcraft. She helped organize those books to be put out for us so that we could just basically set up our volunteer staff to schedule them a couple hours at a time, allow for the public to come in and browse through them. We also have an open house coming up on Friday, April 25th, from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. There will be a flyer attached to this little tote bag that we're going to be giving each of you. It has the Friends of the Garden City Library logo on it. We kind of like that cherry yellow color here. And our children's director wanted me to share our Easter Craft Night, Thursday, April 17th, 6:30 to 7:30, for anyone who has young children. There's also a bookmark and special for you, a free coupon, a coupon for a free used book. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. From the Garden City Community Coalition, we have Sue Nicholas.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to tell you that April is Alcohol Awareness Month. And so the Garden City Community Coalition for the Prevention of Substance Abuse, work group that's done with the youth, the youth work group, in conjunction with the Family Resource Center, is going to be having an activity on Thursday, April 24th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at Maplewood Center. And it's going to be a family-friendly event with a lot of activities designed to help people increase their awareness about alcohol problems and solutions in the community. And it's going to be focused on kids, but families and adults are welcome as well, from 3:00 to 5:00. Arts and crafts, some free food, lots of fun activities for the kids, including a bounce house, and we would love to have everybody come out and see us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to comments from state and county officials. Mr. LeBlanc, Wayne County, you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, administrative staff. Two items that I'd like to bring to your attention, if you will. One of them is that we became noticed today as members of the Wayne County Commission that tomorrow we will be meeting involving a proposal from the SMART transportation folks who have an interest in having the county commission modify the existing provisions for millage. Today, SMART receives the maximum allowable millage, and they are asking the Wayne County Commission to modify language so that they can seek additional millage, likely during the August election. To be very forthright, I don't believe I'm going to be supportive of that on behalf of our residents for various reasons at this time, including that a number of routes within the 12th District and other areas have been eliminated, some recently, but most of them a few years ago, yet we continue to pay that same millage. I understand that they have difficulties regarding capital needs and other items of necessity, but I'm also troubled by their proposal, at least at this point, to go to an August election where, we all know, I mean, August primary elections don't have the same turnout as a general election. So at least today, as I stand here, I cannot imagine being supportive of this proposal as I currently understand it. And I have to also acknowledge that if folks that are here tonight, that are in the listening audience, that are residents of this community would wish to share their opinion, I encourage them to do so one of two ways. You can either contact me by telephone, my residence number's in the phone book, my office number is 313-224-8855, or you can email to district12@wayncounty.com, and that's district12@wayncounty.com. So I would appreciate any feedback that you might like to offer regarding that. But again, as of today, I find it to be problematic. Second item really involves something that already happened, and that was that on March 25th, I hosted with some folks from Wayne County and a couple of other elected folks, I hosted a veteran event at the Wayne Ford Civic League in Westland. Had a really good turnout. I think that the people that attended appreciated what we were offering that day. Certainly, we will utilize what we learned that day to make improvements, to have a better event in the future. We do plan on making it an annual event, perhaps even moving it to other communities as the desire exists. But I would like to say to those of you that were able to attend, thank you, because I know it can't be everywhere, I understand that. So I do appreciate your attendance. There were also members of the council that donated gift cards. We did a drawing about every seven or eight minutes, and actually, at the end of it, for those who stayed to the end, we had too many gift cards. So, you know, it was a high winner turnout, so to speak. But these things don't happen without the, excuse me, the help and support of a lot of people. And I just want to say, I appreciate your support as elected and appointed officials, because, you know, the veterans, I think, need our assistance continually. The things that we try to offer, again, will be modified as we move forward, but, you know, it doesn't happen with one or two people. With that, I'd be pleased to respond to any questions regarding anything I've said or other topics that you might have.
Ms. Litt?
Forgive me, I don't know if you mentioned this earlier, but what is your opinion on the county executive's budget, deficit elimination budget?
I didn't mention that earlier, but what I will say is this, the deficit elimination plan that was proposed by the county executive, probably, I'm going to guess, seven, eight weeks ago, has received weekly deliberation by members of the commission. We involve departments, we involve other people that have county affiliation. Consensus is not likely. It is a very, I'll call it interesting document in that it leaves no stone unturned, nobody untouched, that creates some difficulty for some people who are not represented at this time, namely retirees, because retirees are a part of that package. Their provisions would be modified in two ways, most namely in healthcare. And the folks that choose to visit us to offer comment on that don't like it. So some commissioners have indicated that's a nonstarter. There are other items that, if I were to categorize them, I'd say probably 70% of the items that are within the deficit elimination plan require consent of the bargaining units. They are bargaining matters that cannot be decided by the commission, they cannot be decided by the electorate, they cannot be decided by the executive, and they're pretty far-reaching. So, you know, this is a, it is a negotiation year with the majority of our unions, but unless there is a willingness to get it done, or a plan that says if it doesn't get done, here's what's going to happen to address the financial matters, I'm not sure that there's going to be enough support for that. So I was more optimistic very early on. We set it as a goal, we, being the commission chair, set for us as a goal, April 1st, to have this decided. We're beyond that. I think that every day that we go beyond that without a decision, the closer we get to an election, and you know what that means. So, I mean, that's just to be very frank and forthright about it. My hope would have been that we could separate parts of it that could receive support, get them engaged in moving forward right now, the things that the commission actually does have control over, which are miniscule. But the commission has chosen to not do that.
I know at the CWW meeting last Friday, the 18 communities that were represented did not like the proposal at all.
Yeah.
Especially the two items that would be balancing the budget on our backs, which would involve the county treasurer.
Right.
And reselling us back something that we already own, and that would be our wastewater treatment.
Yeah, well, and those are really the two biggest issues that the commission could decide by itself. I have talked about the tax matter, the issue that involves the treasurer and the $41 million reallocation. The treasurer's made it very clear that that won't work. Law says otherwise, but I know that, you know, laws get challenged, because what the law says is that it shall happen. It's a state law, so the delinquent tax revolving fund will occur, communities shall be reimbursed irrespective of how it happens, that will occur. But when you get to that point, there's kind of a deadline. As far as the wastewater treatment, the county's position, not the county commission necessarily, but the county's position is that the county owns it, that users, being members of the communities within Wayne County that pay for it, are just that, they're users, not different than a cable company. You pay if you want to use it, okay, and if you don't, well, you don't. I have to acknowledge that one of the things that I said at one of our meetings regarding that is that for probably the last dozen years or so, many of the Wayne County communities affiliated with Detroit Water and Sewer, which is all of them, many of the communities have complained about water rates. And part of the complaint has been that there's no participation involved with setting of the rates at that level of government, at the Detroit level. And so there's been some legislation that's been proposed that would offer folks an opportunity to have a seat at the table. What I said was that in terms of this wastewater treatment plan, the proposal, it would actually put everybody at the table. And if you're not at the table, it would be by choice, then you would be a customer for those who went to the table and participated in the purchase. I think it's very complex, I think it's very interesting, and I hope that the communities that I serve don't automatically say no to it. I think it needs to be deliberated at length, and all sides, you know, involved in that conversation. But to just say no, I think that we could replicate, in a not-so-good way, what happens with Detroit Water Sewer, with Detroit Water and the purchase of it, where you really, you don't have an actual say in the rate setting. So those are the two items, though, that the commission could do. They could legally take action on today, but the commission as a collective body has chosen to not do that to this point.
And I just want to close with a question that I asked Mark Abel when he said that the county owns the wastewater treatment, and the county's name is on the document, et cetera, et cetera. And I just simply asked him, who is the county, and where does the county get its funding? And I'll close with that, because I believe that we are the county, and there needs to be something different set up.
Yeah, and again, I wouldn't want to mislead anyone that's listening right now. There has not been detailed conversation regarding the wastewater treatment proposal. There really hasn't. There's been a lot of focus on some other things. There's been very minimal conversation involving that. I think it's a matter of timing, but as I already said, I mean, I'm pragmatic and I'm a realist. The closer we get to these elections, the more difficult it's going to be. Take a look at Lansing, take a look at Washington, it's no different in our communities and in our counties.
Anybody else have anything on this go-by? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. Move on to item nine, consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from...
She's moving, I'll support.
Yeah, there we go.
I'm moving, she's supporting.
Moved by Councilmember Cecersky, supported by Councilmember Lynch. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. We'll move on to our study session. Item one, Garden City Lions Club Annual White Cane Sales. Council's which, I know?
C.
C? Item two, Purchase Service Credit, A and B, two employees.
C.
C? Okay, we took number three off the table.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant did excellent. Item four, Streetlight Program, 2014 LED lighting.
C.
And number five, Request to Purchase a 2014 Ford All-Wheel Drive Vehicle.
C.
C. Okay, we'll move on to our C agenda. Item C1, Garden City Lions Club Annual White Cane Sales.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to grant permission to the Garden City Lions Club to hold their annual White Cane Sales, Street Sales, on April 25th, 26th, and May 2, 3, 2014. Sales would take place at the following intersections, Ford Road and Middle Belt, and Middle Belt and Warren, Ford and Merriman, and Ford Road and Vinoi, subject to receipt of valid hold harmless agreement by each participant in accordance with the city policy of on-street solicitation.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarty. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item two, Purchase Service Credit.
Your Honor, I move to approve the purchase of Municipal Employees Retirement System MERS service credit of two years and one month by Ronald O'Mbarber in accordance with the application for additional credited services dated March 1st, 2014, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this application.
Support. Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Item C4, Streetlight Program, 2014.
You missed one. We got another employee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two B. Sorry about that.
Your Honor?
Cecersky.
To approve the purchase of Municipal Employees Retirement System MERS service credit of three years and seven months by Jeffrey Bobby in accordance with the application for additional credited service dated March 1st, 2014, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this application.
Support.
Support from Ms. King. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to C4, Streetlight Program for 2014 LED lighting. Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve participation in the 2014 DTE LED Streetlight Conversion Campaign and to authorize the expenditure of $39,389 to DTE for the conversion of 186 streetlights to LED.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any discussion? This is an improvement to our streetlights. It's also energy savings, comes with a payback in just under three years. Do you have anything to add to that, Chief?
Nothing, Your Honor, other than to point out that this total project actually costs over $60,000, but DTE is contributing labor in the amount of $12,000, and then they assist us in receiving an energy optimization rebate for $9,700, which brings us down to the net costs that's been mentioned. This is part of a continuing, ongoing campaign to get these converted over to LED. As you mentioned, we'll be saving in energy costs just for these lamps, $13,225 and some change annually. We did slightly more lamps than previous fiscal year, so we're enjoying that energy savings also. And we're just taking small bites at this. We've actually had discussions with DTE on doing the entire city, but that would be a pretty major bite for our budget to take on. So we just continue to move along.
Okay. Any other discussion from the table, from the general public? Mr. Jones?
What sections of the city are going to be included in this round?
This time primarily will be the northeast corner of the city, along with Vinoi between Marquette and Cherry Hill, and some energy suckers at the park that we did not do in the last campaign.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Next item, Request to Purchase a 2014 Ford All-Wheel Drive Vehicle. Mayor? Mr. Kerwin?
Resolve to authorize the purchase of one 2014 Ford All-Wheel Drive Police, Ford Police Interceptor from Corno Ford in the amount of $23,675.
Support.
And...
Ew, too fast.
And just so the public knows, this is for, this is from a drug forfeiture money that we received for our officer and police dog, so it's cost us absolutely nothing out of our pocket. Thank you.
Yes, I was going to say, it replaces the K-9 vehicle, which is eight years old.
I think it was older than that.
Yeah, so, paid for with drug money. Council, I work at Ford Motor Company, I've given this drill before, it's up to you, do you want me to abstain from voting, or do you wish me to vote?
You can vote.
Okay. I've declared it. Any other discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Sorry, who was this? Yeah.
Ms. King?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Cecersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarty?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Can't have all Dodges out there, right? It's a joke. Okay, we will move on to our public comments for items that were not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please come into the podium, state your name. There's a five-minute time limit. Also a reminder, this is not the opportunity to gauge in question and answers with council members. This is your opportunity to make a comment or a statement. Yes, sir?
Name, Bill Subobria, resident of Garden City since 65, and on the audit of the water system, how far has that progressed, and when can we see the total of this audit? I received my water bill today, and according to the usage I had a little over a year ago, same rate, everything like that, five units. My old bill was $56.09, same unit, under the new system, five units. It is total 66.34. Where is this saving me money by this new system? That's what I would like to know, and I would request we go back to the old system, or put a fire on somebody who's making this audit to find out exactly what's going on. Because it's sure not saving me money. That's about what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm sure it'll be addressed during our roundtable tonight. Mr. Wallace?
Buddy Wallace, even council, got something to show you. Over 80 years old, still works. Our water main going west of Merriman Road on Maplewood to Vinoi was built in 1930. Pretty old, nothing's been done to it. Yet. Some papers out of here, explain something to you. The $26 that you add to our water bill, residents, you get not one drop of water for this. God didn't make Garden City any wider. We spent all the money, the people that put the pipes in, it paid for by the city, this $26 attachment to the water bill is the most asinine thing that I've ever seen in my life. It's not fair. In the law of court, it will never pass if it goes to court. You will be paying it back. If you take that $26 and multiply it times 12,500 homes, it don't sound like much money, but it totals $1,987,000 a year. That's quite a bit of money. You got people out here, the seniors, I don't know how they make it. Some of the women that's 70 years old wasn't able to work when they were growing up, and their husbands died. They grow up, some of them not even $500 a month. Water's... Water's a necessity. In the world meeting, the main topic this year, in the world meeting, was conserving water. What you did, you put the burden on the little people, the small end users, you up their water rate. If they use an average of four units, it costs them $6.64 extra per unit. If you take somebody that used 200 units, they pay 13, just a little over 13 cents per unit. It's not right, it's not fair. Not fair. I don't know how, who ever come up with this? It's boring, you better go back and re-figure it. There's something wrong. I've been working and studying about saving water. So far, I worked for Mesco, Delta faucet, Peerless faucet, and I know a lot about saving water. I took my aerators out for about four months, and you can check my water bill. My water bill increased from $50 to $167 by the water savings. And I'll tell you why people, what they do, they take those aerators and throw them out because our water lines are so rusty, it clogs them up and you don't get any pressure out of them, throw away. Those are major to give you 1.5 gallons per minute. When you take them out, it's about four times that much. I feel sorry for the people, the people, you know, I'm comfortable, but there's people, how do they live on $500 and pay their taxes and pay their water? It's not right, it's not very right at all. I wish that somebody would address this, I know that we have the audit out for the water. That $26 for not a drop of water is not right. It is not right, and it is not legal. Fact. Thank you very much, thank you, council. You guys donate your time really, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Is this also a time for comments? I mean...
Public comments?
Yes.
I'm Jim Anthony, vice president of GCYA, Garden City Youth Athletic Association.
I'm Ken Kibbit, the president of Garden City Youth Athletic Association.
This year, we're celebrating our 60th anniversary. Councilman Kerwin was a long part of this organization. It's an all-volunteer organization that puts kids first. Our motto has always been, "Kids and sports, not in trouble." Well, this year, we're celebrating it, like I said, our 60th anniversary, and we'd like you all to attend opening day. And here's notices for every one of you guys to attend, it's the first Saturday in May. We'd love you all to come, and we're inviting you before to the pancake breakfast, and it's on the house for you guys, for all the work you've guys done, and what you've done for the kids, it's been wonderful. And all I can do is say thanks, and what we're gonna do is start up a basketball program, we're in conjunction with Dan Plamondon with Parks and Recreation. We want everyone to know that that's gonna be coming up this fall, so spread the word, we're gonna try to get as many kids back into the basketball program, we're gonna try to help run it for Dan. So, here's Ken Kibbit.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate what Jim said, we're all about the kids, and I do it for the kids. My child is grown up, I keep here, I come here, and I do it for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, do great work, and I know I'll be there.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for the many hundreds of hours you put in.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Michael Bowman, and I live at 28989 Barton, and I've been there eighteen years, and my wife has been there forty-eight. This is in regards to the city ordinance about dog control. It's been going on, I've noticed it here for a while. My wife walks her dogs every day, and I've seen what goes on, and she's had a problem with dogs. We just had a dog problem Saturday, where we had two pit bulls, vicious dogs, come out of the yard, and they attacked two of my dogs. Now, this is an ongoing problem with this type of breed that's been moving into our community, and it's happening all over the place. You generally don't see poodles and labradors and dogs like that attacking other dogs as we're walking. My dogs aren't the only ones. The same day, there was a golden retriever that was attacked by the same dogs that came through the fence, underneath the fence, not a hole. And this guy says that they're contained, they won't hurt anything. Well, I ended up at the vet, my dogs were attacked, they were bitten, I had to take them almost $100 to have them checked. Homeowner takes no responsibility whatsoever, so I had to pay out of my pocket, and they did everything they could do to lie, to seal, saying that their dogs were great dogs. Well, that's not the case, but it happens everywhere. And I'm here today to say that something needs to be done. We don't have animal control. The police did come out, when they came out, I don't believe any tickets were issued, so I don't think they did that. But if we had animal control like we've had, we haven't had it in like probably fifteen years, ten to fifteen years. So before, if you called, they would come out, warning or whatever, to take care of the problem. But this ongoing problem with these dogs, something's gotta be done. And a suggestion was offered to me by a police officer, I just happened to be with my wife, he says, "Well, maybe take an alternate route." Well, taking alternate route is not the answer to correcting the problem with these dogs. So, I'm hoping that something can be done about this. This is not just in our area, it's happened all over Garden City, I've heard it from several people. And it's just, yeah, it just needs to be taken care of somehow to address the situation before somebody or some child really gets hurt. And this is right next to Lathers, which is a school zone, so there's a lot of people in our neighborhood that walks their dogs all over Garden City, there's a ton of them. And, you know, I'm not very happy with me putting the bill, and I said the homeowner would said, "Hey, you know, I was wrong, my dogs got out through the fence, let me take care of the vet bill." Not, they didn't even offer. It was brought up to them, the officers talked to them, but they can't make them do anything. So, it's not worth my time, well, it is worth my time, but to go to court civilly and try to sue them for $100, now I gotta watch my dog, make sure that everything's okay, to take and to lose $500 in time off and work and have to do this, it's just, it's an issue that needs to be taken care of. It's gotten really out of hand here in pretty much the last year.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll look into it, sir.
Thanks.
My name is Sue Harrison, I live on Barton, down the street from the Bowman's, and I want to address the same problem. Apparently, we have two ordinances, one against loose dogs, and one against vicious dogs. I'm not sure that the police department knows that. But when those dogs were out and bit his dog, they needed to issue a ticket to him. Obviously, the Bowman's dogs did not go into their yard, yet they were bitten, and nothing was done. If you have an ordinance that you're not gonna support, get rid of it, and I told you that once before, had to do with barking dogs. Now, if I remember right, maybe a year or so ago, a dog got out of a truck, attacked another dog in Garden City, they got the dog back in the truck and drove off. Mrs. Lynch got really excited about that and said, "Let's pass an ordinance that says you can't do that in Garden City." I want to know if you got that passed, Mrs. Lynch, 'cause we got a dog doing that in Garden City, and nothing gets done. What does it take to get the police department to do something? And I'll tell you, I've had it up to here with go another way. It's my city, I pay the taxes here, I can go any way I want. It's a public sidewalk, I'm allowed to walk on it. So if you guys can't handle that, let's get a police department that will do something about it. And before you get really excited, I wanted to mention that I went to the ice show on Saturday, and not only was it a spectacular show, the announcing was brilliant, the choreography was brilliant, but we even got to see it because the plastic had been removed from around the ice arena. So, thanks, and see what you can do about those ordinances.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Samantha Baker from the Figure Skating Club, and we have lots of our members and girls with us from the ice show this weekend, and I'm kind of echoing what she said, we just wanted to thank DPS for hanging our curtains, and our lights, and our moon, and a special thanks to you for having them take the glass out. It made a huge difference for the spectators, they could actually see the girls afterwards, the girls could go and see their families and get pictures, and it just really made a huge difference, so thank you very much, we all really, really appreciate it, we know it was a big deal to get it done, so thank you very much for that, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
These are some of the girls that ruined the show this weekend, these are the moms that did, you know, all the work.
Very good.
I would just like to say, as a figure skating club member, although we, all of us moms were very busy behind the curtain, and in the locker rooms, and with the bake sale, and selling flowers, and delivering flowers, we were able to catch bits and pieces of the show, and there was a huge difference in the experience from the dress rehearsal on Thursday night when the glass was up, to the performance on Friday and Saturday. It was a completely different experience for the spectators, so again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up, girls. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Angela, I'm one of the coaches from the Garden City Figure Skating Club, and I just wanted to say thank you as well, because I know for myself, we had this part where we were able to interact with the audience, and I thought it was really cool because I got to reach out and like give a high five to one of the kids, and they seemed to enjoy that, and just being able to like kind of be more physical with them like that, and really get up into them, I think they enjoyed it more, and I heard too that they were able to really engage in our performance more that way too, so I wanted to say thank you as well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm wearing the T-shirt from the ice show. Nobody else? So I'm right in front of the room. Opal Loveland Farren, I'm a Garden City resident for thirty-five years, Garden City business owner for twenty-five years, and a supporter of the Garden City Figure Skating Program for over twenty-seven years. Makes me old. But there, I am proudly known as Miss Opal. I'm here today to express my gratitude to our city manager, and Mr. Robert Murray, and to Mr. Roney, the DQW director, and the team they assembled to remove the plastic at the arena for our ice show this past weekend. Our show was a huge success, and so much more enjoyable for the skaters and the audience with the plastic removed, just like the others have said. This was important to us because skating under the spotlights, where the lights are reflecting off the plastic, creates a particular safety issue for our skaters out on the ice, and we had to deal with that last year. This year, our skaters and our spectators enjoyed a more intimate experience and a clear view of the show. Seeing the skaters after the show skate over to the boards, and we see flowers, hugs, and accolades from family and friends was truly heartwarming. It was a bonus for me because one of our little skater's grandmother happens to be named Opal, and I don't meet too many Opals in this world. So, we even got to hug and take a picture together, and that would not have happened if the plastic was still up. So I'd been told that she wasn't gonna be able to attend because she was on oxygen all the time. When they shouted to me and called me over after the final show, I was surprised and pleased that the plastic was down, because she would not have been able to climb the bleachers to try to see the view of the show over the plastic, knowing that she's on oxygen all the time. So, I truly thank you for all the little bonuses we got with the plastic down. It was a great show, and these are some of our wonderful skaters, so. I have to switch gears and go to the dog issue. I have three golden retrievers, and I want to address the problem of dogs off-leash, and dogs at large, and also cars blocking sidewalks. We have ordinances addressing all of these issues. Ordinances are in place to create a safer community for all residents and visitors. I believe the unwillingness of residents to comply with these ordinances is creating a multitude of safety issues in our community. In our neighborhood, we have several people of all ages that are frequently at risk of injury due to unrestrained dogs and cars blocking sidewalks. We have a number of dog walkers, including myself, and I'm usually walking three dogs. I can tell you, it's extremely unsettling to encounter unrestrained dogs when you're walking your dog. This shouldn't be occurring as frequently as it is, and I'm pleading with members of council and our own residents to do what they can to stop this and become part of the solution instead of part of the problem. The same can be said about the cars parked across sidewalks. Some members of council were very passionate this past winter with their pleas for residents to clear the snow off the sidewalks. This is the same issue, our sidewalks are blocked by cars very frequently. I'm asking you to please extend that same request to drivers who block our sidewalks. Thank you. And do I have time left?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a minute.
I want to ask for a little TLC to be directed to Florence Park. If y'all want to go over and take a walk through it, it'll become real clear to you what the problems are. The fence is totally littered with shrubs and litter now. The playground equipment is sitting in water. We need a lot more mulch there, and something needs to be done, the kids can't even use the playground equipment right now. And the walkway going out to...
Alton?
Is totally littered too. I don't know whose responsibility it is. I got a chainsaw for my birthday, I'll go to work if I just get this going. I need a chipper though.
Thank you, Mrs. Farren.
Good evening, my name is Mike Farren, I'm the proud husband of our last speaker. I would like to thank our city manager for his efforts at our ice show this year. We are lucky to have a city manager like Bob Murray here. Even though the city is short on funds, when somebody comes to Mr. Murray with a problem, he doesn't say, "We don't have money, we don't have staff," he says, "Let's see how we can get this done." I don't know where this city would be without his leadership, and I really appreciate it, sir. I would also like to address the dog issue as a proud parent of three of the most gentle, beautiful golden retrievers. Anybody who's been in our store has met them, Lily, Ally, and Winnie, they've starred on the front page of The Observer. And I have had pit bulls run up to me, fortunately not attack my dogs, but folks, I feel the same way that you would feel if your child was attacked by a vicious dog. I don't know what I would do if that happened, but I can assure you, I would do something. And I can't believe that a parent wouldn't do the same thing if their child was mauled by a vicious dog. There are communities that have ordinances banning vicious breeds. There are also some communities that charge an extra license fee if you have a vicious breed. I would like to see the city at least do that, and that fee could cover the cost of an inspection of their yard and property to make sure that their vicious ghetto dogs were properly secured. There need to be consequences if people bring that type of dog into our beautiful city here, and it's allowed to get out and attack anybody or anything. Thanks, and I hate it to end on that note, but thank you very much. I was the announcer for the ice show, they were kind enough to ask me again this year, and I had a ball, I'd love to do it again.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, city manager's report?
Well, Your Honor, Your Honor, I did only have two things, it's grown in magnitude here. First, regarding in particular the glass removal before the ice show, while I'm thrilled to hear all these kind words, if I hadn't been able to get Mr. Roney to the table, who has a clear understanding of what we want to do as an administration here, and that's to serve our community and find ways to solve problems, not hide under the guise of a tight budget. So, Mr. Roney deserves all the accolades, if not a little more. There's a much longer story here on why the glass wasn't even initially thought of to be replaced. However, bright and early Friday morning, I received, actually Thursday, I'm sorry, I received an email, I had a meeting Friday morning, and I think around 10 o'clock with Mr. Roney, and he was able to pull it together in very short order. So, while I appreciate the kind words, it wasn't my cape with the big red S that got the job done, it was Mr. Roney and his... It was Mr. Roney and his true understanding of what we're trying to do here. Regarding the question about what's happened to the audit, we are expecting an update, I believe, on the 15th. We had a communication with them about a week ago, I believe, and they gave us the 15th as the next date that they would report to us.
Tomorrow.
I am also anxious for this report. That's right, I'm sorry. Because the 15th apparently is significant to accountants. I'm not really sure. Some kind of meaningful date. But we're looking for that report just as much as everyone else is. Regarding, council debated water a great deal, and I don't want to beat it down now. We're going to have hearings on this. We're going to talk about it. But it needs to be understood that if Garden City next month buys not a drop of water, we will owe $46,439 approximately to DWSD by not a drop of water. There is a price for having it ready to serve at the door. That's what the homeowners are experiencing. That's what council did. Let's spread that around. And of course, we will be analyzing this, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that there's an expense whether any water is bought or not. The GCYAA, we had a meeting with them last week regarding this basketball program. I am very excited about this. I think that this is another example, well, the GCYAA has always stepped up. In this case, they've stepped up, and quite honestly, I believe they'll be able to do it better than we can. As a city, I will support them in any way we can, but this is, for them to decide to do this, I think is just a great thing and a great thing for the kids. We had a windstorm barrel through. I'm sure somebody noticed. If you live in the area of Dawson and Henry Rough, we're still looking for a missing shed. We have no idea where it came down, but if you went to work today, didn't have a shed and came home and had one, give the police department a call. Regarding the dog ordinance, council will also remember that you debated this quite heavily. There are limitations on what the police can do. If we are going to issue a citation for a dog running at large, we need one of two things. We either need to see it ourselves, or we need a firm commitment from a complainant, "I will show up in court and testify against this." That's what we need for those kinds of things. Now, what council did do was simplify a procedure that allows anyone to walk over there to the 21st District Court and file a case, reporting this dog at this address and requesting a court case. And that goes in front of the judge, who then assesses whether or not this is a vicious dog, whether or not this dog should remain in our community. The form is available at the court. I would recommend that. As Ms. Farren said, be part of the solution. The police can't do everything. When we go to one of these complaints, the officers do check, does this dog have a license? And that we can write a ticket for because we're seeing that the dog doesn't have a license. But generally, by the time we get there, the mean old dog has gone back in the house and has settled down and calmed, and we need the support of citizens to testify. Often, citizens do not want to become involved in what could be a two, three, four court appearances on an issue. So, I would encourage you to do that. I want to, speaking of getting involved, I want to mention a guy I ran into about 10 days ago. I was driving through Ford and Middle Belt, and I saw an older gentleman out picking up litter in the downtown area, and I just had to know. So, I pulled over and talked to him, and his name is Klosser. Mr. Klosser's a longtime Garden City resident, and he at first thought that I, as a police officer, was upset with him. And I explained to him, "No, I'm just pretty impressed." And he was out there picking up litter, just because he didn't like the way it looked in the Ford and Middle Belt area. And I applaud that kind of community activism. I think that's, you know, that's walking the walk. That's coming through. And finally, regarding cars blocking sidewalks, I'm sure you'll remember that the police department undertook a rather aggressive campaign last year. Oh, Lord. I cannot right at this moment think of anything that's generated more phone calls to my office, but we'll certainly do it again. Because if we're going to sit up here and tout a walkable community, then we should apply our resources to making it walkable. So, if you're parking a car across a sidewalk, take it as a warning right now. We're going to come for you. The weather's cleared up. It's time for us to be out there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, I know I'm on order, but I want to say something.
Ma'am, ma'am, you had your...
Came out to the...
Ma'am, sit down.
Saw one of the dogs come out.
Ma'am. Ma'am, sit down. Ma'am. Let's follow the order, please. Mr. Kirwin?
Yes, sir. Thanks to all you girls, and I'm glad your skating show was a big success. Excuse me, also, thanks to the GCYAA, although I am a prejudiced, been involved for a long time, and thank you for you guys and all the members for all the thousands and thousands of hours that you put in. Also, I'm in full agreement with Mr. Murray. I mean, nothing teases me off more than see somebody, especially a kid, or somebody walking a dog. I mean, you don't have to be old or young to get hit by a car, but it has to veer off, like you say, especially a child, into the street because somebody has parked across the sidewalk. Well, shame on you. Do what's right. Park, you might have to walk another 10 feet, but do what's right. And you know what? If you get a ticket, too bad. I'm in full agreement. That's just the way it is. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. McCarrick?
It just seems like yesterday when GCYAA was celebrating their 50th anniversary, and the same gentlemen were extremely involved at that time too. Nice seeing you, and it doesn't surprise me, so congratulations. And I am very happy that the basketball program is going to be continued with GCYAA, so that's another real plus. Water, I think we're all just really want as many facts as we can get, and we will diligently review the water. We are just as anxious as the public to be able to look at the water again. So, please, I know it's frustratingly slow, but we'll get there. That's it.
Ms. King?
Just a couple things, Ashley. I had a email come in regarding talking about parks, the same thing over at Maplewood, from a coach, a soccer coach, who, it's quite lengthy, and I'll turn it into you so that you can read it. But they had the same complaint, you know, of the condition that it's in and what needs to be done. And I know that we're working on it because the rotary is really nice. I mean, it looks good now. It's taking place. So, are we...
Pam, I was, I got the same email, and what I had not had time to check is because of that soccer field belonged to the school system, at one time, that was being, the school was being held responsible for...
They still are. The school is still? So, it's up to the school on that one?
And Mr. Roney took care of it.
Anyway?
Yes.
Okay. And also, we had, it's in here someplace. Well, I do have kudos for Mr. Murray and Mr. Roney because I know the job that you've been doing right along has been excellent. We have no complaints whatsoever, and we're real glad we got you. There's a couple other things, but I will discuss them later.
Ms. Betts, you have anything for us tonight?
I omitted some announcements under the community event, so if you indulge me. I just want to let everyone know that we are having, my boss affectionately, I guess, calls me the recycling Nazi. And so, we are having our second semi-annual shred day on Saturday, May 3rd, and it will be right here at the City Hall parking lot. And it's a good time after everybody's finished with all of their taxes, every version that they have. You can put all of that in a bag and come and bring it to our parking lot, and you don't even have to get out of your car. Some beautiful, supportive people from the community, the Family Resource Center, come and help them get it out of your car. We take up to, I believe, five bags, and just, we'll shred it right there on site. We have the vendor right there. Also, because it's apparently Recycling Heaven Day, Wayne County is going to be holding their household hazardous waste collection. That's going to be at the Wayne County Community College over on Hagerty in Belleville. And so, after you drop off all of your paperwork at our place, you can truck on down to the Wayne County Community College campus and discard household paint, floor wax, furniture polish, batteries, fire extinguishers, mercury thermometers, and electronics recycling because you know you have the big monitor that you have from the 80s, the smaller monitor that you have from the 90s, and one flat screen that you still have. And you can get rid of all of those in a proper way, and that's also going to be done there at the WC3 College Campus. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hershey?
The only thing that I have is regarding the water and what we're all talking about, and the residents asking about the audit. We do have a budget meeting coming up in which that, I believe at that time, once we start to get the information, I'll feel more comfortable talking about the water. But until that time, until I see the numbers and see what the auditors are telling us, it's really hard for us to even talk about it at this point. And so, I just wanted to let the public know that's where we're coming from, from this side. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Lenz?
I just wanted to explain the reason I was late tonight is because I got to help honor a wonderful lady over at the American Legion Hall this evening, just before our meeting. Karen McAdams. A lot of people know her as Mouse, and she won the Woman of Distinction Award this year, and she's certainly a very deserving lady. I think everything else has basically been said. Reminds you 28 hours left until tax day is over. So, if you haven't sent in those taxes, probably the ones where you have to pay, make sure you do it by tomorrow. And other than that, happy spring and happy Easter to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, please excuse me, but Ms. Lynch has, one of our upcoming workshops, April 23rd, is a, it's a back-to-water workshop, as I recall. And Ms. Lynch has a problem with that date, and she's hoping that we can reschedule that so that she can be present. And Ms. Betts and I have talked, and we think it's very important that we have our full council there to consider this. And so, I just want to make sure that, I don't know whether council wants to handle this outside of this meeting or take advantage of this to discuss...
We can discuss it now. What would you like to move that meeting to?
We do have a budget meeting currently scheduled for the 21st, correct?
That is correct.
At 6:00.
And we can move the one from the 23rd to that following week. During the week, we have a regular council meeting that Monday, or we can move it to later in May, just pushes back our little budget schedule, but still within a reasonable timeline.
The following week would be Wednesday, April 30th.
Okay. You guys okay with April 30th, Wednesday? April 30th?
Sounds plausible.
So, we're going to cancel...
Cancel the 23rd.
Canceling the budget workshop on April 23rd and moving it to...
Wednesday, April 30th.
April 30th?
At 6:00 PM.
Okay. 6:00 PM, April 30th?
We're going to make that in a form of a motion, Mayor, so I'll make the motion.
They were asking what time, yeah.
I move to call for a special budget water meeting on Wednesday, April 30th, at 6:00 PM.
Support.
And to cancel.
Support from Ms. King?
And cancel the meeting on the...
Any other discussion from the table on that, from the general public?
Wednesday, the 30th.
Wednesday, April 30th at 6:00 PM.
Instead of the 23rd.
And where's the location?
Police Department where they've all been.
Police Department. Okay. Ms. Betts?
Councilmember Sissiski?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarr?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. You all set, Ms. Lenz?
Yes.
Okay. If I recall, chief, on this vicious dog ordinance, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure I'm correct on this, I think if there's three complaints on the same dog, vicious dog complaint, the dog can be removed or put to sleep. I don't want to come out and say that for a fact, but we need to, we need to check that and then convey it back to the residents. I think that's one of the reasons why we came up with the vicious dog ordinance. So, it's important for residents to report vicious dogs, and I would suggest, everybody's got cell phones, snap a picture of the dog running off the leash in the street on the sidewalk. That, the more evidence you have, the better. So, everybody's got cell phones. Take your cellphone with you when you're walking your dog. I know you're worried about your dog if a dog's coming at him. I get that. But if you have the opportunity to snap a picture, that, all that's going to help. But I think, and we'll look, I think if there's three complaints on the same dog, action can be taken to remove the dog. And I believe that's why we came, does anybody recall that?
I do remember, yes, that it is a three-level...
There's different levels, so it's important if you have a vicious dog...
But wouldn't you have to file it?
You have to contain them first, and then you have to do something else.
I think, yeah, you have to file a complaint. You've got to make the police report. It probably has to go to the court system. But what I'm getting at, action can take, and if we get them to the third step.
Right.
And I don't know all the details right here. I'm doing this off the top of my head. I'm trying to help. We'll read the ordinance and come back at the next meeting. Actually, what we should do, chief, now that the weather's breaking, kids and people are out walking and playing, and the observers always calling, asking for stories, why don't we put out what the vicious dog ordinance is? Why don't we remind residents not to block sidewalks? That they will be ticketed, and that way, we're getting the message out to the residents, and we're educating them as well. So, the observer's always wanting a story. I think we need to put that story together on vicious dogs and blocking the driveway, and that will help everybody.
And Mayor, if I could add one more thing? Just like the manager said, if you want to get this thing going immediately, there are forms right behind us, right here at the court, where you can fill them out immediately. If you want to get into court with that dog, you don't even have to call the police. You can just fill out the form. So, that's a fast way to do it.
I encourage you to use your cellphone with that camera.
Yeah.
Snap those dogs that are off the leash running wild in the street and on the sidewalk. Okay? That's just a suggestion, but let's get that out in the observer to everybody, and it's a good reminder, and hopefully people will block in the driveways too. That way, when they get a ticket, they can't say, "Nobody told me." We've said it on TV. We'll put it again in the paper, and they're going to complain anyway if they get a ticket, but they've been forewarned. Okay. And GCYAA, great work you guys do. I look forward every day to, every year to opening day, and I just can't believe over 60 years, all the volunteers that we've had that make such a great success. I played in GCYAA in 1968, '69. I remember going door to door in my uniform, selling box of Russell Stover candies to help pay for my uniform. It's great. Now, I've got my grandkids playing. It's just awesome, and you guys do great work. Okay, at this time, a motion is in order to go into closed session for contract negotiations with COAM, IAFF, POAM, TPOAM, GCS, PPA, and POAM Dispatch.
So, moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lynch. Seconded by Ms. King.
Mayor, just so the council knows, I do have a conflict of interest with the COAM contract, and I will not be sitting in on that portion, but when you guys are done with COAM, I will come in for the additional contracts. That's okay with the group?
Ms. Betts?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sissiski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarr?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. At this time, we're going to recess to go into closed session. Thank you. Aye. At this time, we're going to recess to go into closed session.